I'm going to call the meeting to order.
Are we all on the mics on?
Yep, be careful.
Yours isn't on until, you know, you're an official alternative.
Really?
Yeah. Otherwise you just remember the public.
So I could say anything?
Yeah.
Okay. Roll call.
Are we going to do the pledge of allegiance?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm just a mess here, sorry. Pledge, please stand.
I think it is to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry. Okay. Roll call.
Roll call, Commissioner Morris?
Here.
Commissioner Glass?
Here.
Vice Chair Hewitt?
Here.
Chairman Montano?
Here.
Commissioner Putnam?
Here.
Commissioner Patterson?
Here.
Commissioner Phillips?
Here.
And alternate hall?
Here.
Okay. Any announcements?
I'll just let you guys know that we are going to be discussing the conditional use permit issues that the council asked us to discuss at the February meeting. So any thoughts you want to have when we come back to that. I'll send out a list of the things they wanted us to discuss so we can kind of be prepared, but that will be on the February meeting.
Thank you.
And then, go ahead.
Go ahead, I'm good.
You'll notice that we kind of made a few changes to our agenda. At the suggestion of the city attorney, we have created a consent calendar, so it'll function similar in the way that the council's consent calendar is, so if you don't have an issue with anything on the consent, then we'll adopt them all together. I know Commissioner Patterson had suggested some changes to the actions. We gave you that paragraph that she wanted to make some changes to. It related to comments that she had made at the last meeting, and she was just wanting to clarify those comments. So if that paragraph is acceptable to everyone, we'll incorporate that change in the motion to, in that change, in the motion to approve everything on consent. Do we need to pull it off?
No.
No, okay. If we don't have any other issues with the, if you guys want to pull any of the other resolutions, if you have any issues with them.
The only other announcement we have is it's my wife's birthday today, so I'm trying to get on the 7:30 boat, given that we only have two, three action items on the agenda. We should make it, but keep that in mind. And I'm willing to stay, and she's prepared to celebrate without me. Probably make her happier frankly, if I'm not there.
Okay.
So if no comments or changes to any of the resolutions, I'll just go through them really quick. The consent calendar includes the December 5th actions with the modifications proposed by Commissioner Patterson, the resolution to adopt the findings and the approvals for the decks at 181 Lower Terrace, the resolution to adopt the findings and the approvals at 523 Crescent Avenue, resolution to adopt the findings and the approvals for the golf cart pavilion at 520, excuse me, 625 Crescent Avenue, and a resolution to adopt the findings and the approvals for the improvements at the coffee shop at 505 50 Crescent Avenue. 505 507 Crescent Avenue.
Make a motion.
Chairman.
Call for vote.
Do we need to roll call? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Stand. Okay. The next two items are coming at you semi jointly. We had reviewed the accessory dwelling unit ordinance and the density bonus ordinance changes. We had sent those up to the city council. The city council has requested a change in both of those ordinances, and that change requires for it to come back to you. The change in both of those ordinances was to set the minimum rental term to not less than six months. The original language proposed by the commission was to be not less than 30 days, and the council felt that it was more prudent to change that to not less than six months. And that would be the change that is being proposed in both the accessory dwelling unit ordinance and the density bonus ordinance. So I believe the correct action that you would be taking this evening is to review those changes and recommend back to the council to adopt the ordinance as with that change.
Seems kind of odd.
Well, it's basically, what the rule is, is that if, if it came before the planning commission and you specifically did not discuss what the council wants, then it has to come back to the council. So, you know, if you had discussed it and had had a long debate over hours of whether it should be six months or 30 days, then it can stay with the council. But because you did not engage in certain discussions, we have to come, we have to bring it back.
Okay.
Should they motion?
Make a motion to approve it as submitted by the city council.
Do they need to do them separately, or?
You can do them both together, six and seven, you just have to make certain measures.
So moved?
I second.
Call for vote.
Wait, hang on, do we have to have it here? Any public comment?
Comment?
Okay, close the public hearing. Any discussion? Okay. Eric made?
Motion.
The motion.
Call a seconded.
Call for vote.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Glass?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hewitt?
Yes.
Chairman Montano?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you. This may be a record. Our next item is a public hearing requesting approval of a sign variance to allow for the placement of an oversized sign on the awning above the entrance to the restaurant at the PKW Restaurant. This is at 127 Sumner. This is the restaurant proposed to be in the lobby of the Atwater Hotel. Once those renovations are complete, they had requested that the sign on the awning be greater than eight square feet. They went, as you know, in order to grant a variance, you have to make particular findings to support that variance. One of the findings that has to be made is the hardship as to why they need a larger sign. Staff looked at the sign, looked at where it is, and we could not make a finding supporting the hardship. So we are recommending that you deny the variance for an oversized sign on the canopy.
You have a picture of both of the awnings?
I do, I have a photo, excuse me.
Remember, you're not?
I'm not awning.
Yes, right, so you can, once we're done, you can participate as a member of the public.
Okay.
And just the?
Do we have a picture?
One of the, one of, one of the considerations was, their hardship was because it's difficult to see the sign on Front Street, and we didn't feel that that was a hardship, because if that was a hardship, then every sign would have to be bigger and violate the sign ordinance, and you'd have a cascading thing of ever enlarging signs. Plus, they already have, on the side of the building, they have a large sign that says what it is. So we just felt that in this instance, you could not make a hardship by.
So are you saying that the sign is also going to go up on the side up here?
No, it's already there.
Or are you talking about?
Yeah, that sign's going to stay, that's not shown on this picture.
Oh, that's what I'm wondering. So the one that's not shown here is going back? Or are you talking about the other one?
It's my understanding that the oversized hotel Atwater sign that's painted on the side of the building is going away.
Oh, okay.
That was my, my last conversation with them, and that sign is not part of this application.
Because it's a hotel, and this is the restaurant.
This is just?
Right, okay, just the restaurant.
This is just the oversized sign on the awning over the entry to the restaurant.
That's circled and green.
The circle in green just shows you where that restaurant sign is going to be, it's in that middle awning, and then?
In the bigger one?
In the, in this small one. This big one is the one that the city council gave a encroachment permit to. This one is the structure, but the one that's, that's further over towards the door of the arcade, and it's this little one right here.
So the, so the new awning that they asked to be big and encroach may block this sign from view from Front Street. So then the question is, that's why we felt that wasn't a hardship, because?
It's their design.
And it's their design, and then again, then if you made a hardship here, the thought is that you'd have this cascading thing where every sign should be visible.
Have to have a sign in the sand trap.
And it just keeps getting bigger and bigger and bigger. And so, that's why we felt it should be denied.
With that being said, I've been here quite a few times when there's sign variances, and I remember the one on Front Street. So it's just, and I remember the Glenmore Plaza one, that was already up before the variance was requested, so this is, you know, I mean?
There's already oversized signs in there.
Right, exactly. This wouldn't be the first time we've denied an oversized sign, there was one for the Avalon Grill, that they requested it to be much larger, and that's on Front Street. And the previous commission said no, there's no hardship there.
And the, I'm sorry, Eric, go ahead.
The sign that Neen's Restaurant had was conforming or nonconforming?
It was conforming.
It was conforming.
I believe it was conforming.
So they're changing the restaurant, but they want bigger than what the conforming sign is?
Good point.
It's almost twice its size.
And I don't think you could see it from Front Street anyway, so. And, and I, what I worry about is it's setting precedent for the rest of the block outside of that one sign, which as you said, you're?
It's already been done.
Well, but it was there for?
No, no, no.
And I think, I don't want to confuse, the giant sign on the side of the building is for the hotel.
Yeah, forget that, sorry, I was mistaken.
In their application, they list that the Neen's blade sign was 8.75 square feet, and it stuck out. It was a blade sign, not a canopy sign. Right, I'm sorry.
That's counting this side and that side, it was a two-sided sign?
Yes, it was a two-sided sign.
And that's what the picture is of there, yeah.
And, and just for a point of reference, the Glenmore Plaza sign was an existing sign that they wanted to take down and replace. They had had that giant sign up there for a long time, but when you have a legal nonconforming aspect and you want to change it?
You have to bring it.
You lose the legal nonconforming. So they had to come back and re-legalize it when they wanted to replace the existing sign, because it was oversized. So they had had a giant sign up there, but they had to go through the variance process to replace it.
Okay. I'm going to open it up to the public. Would anyone in the public like to discuss anything on this item?
Somebody would.
Can you talk in the mic and state your name? Because we don't know it.
Janice Hall, 334 Clarissa. It would be so much easier to see the total picture if these two were combined. Could we, or would be, ask the applicant to, you know, put the two, the hotel and the restaurant together in?
We probably have those from when they applied for the big canopy, I just didn't think to include it. And I just added this last photo just because it had a little bit more perspective to show what the canopies look, the awnings look like.
And the other thing is, it's odd, I think, to name a restaurant PKW.
Unfortunately, we don't get that choice.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't connote restaurant by?
They have the First Amendment right to name it whatever they want.
Okay. Well, that's sort of, it flies in the face of their argument, it being recognized, you know, from a distance or whatever. But that's, that's their problem. Yeah, I would just like to see both pictures together, so you see the, I mean, they're actually asking for a city block to become an island company block, realistically, when, you know, that's, they're going to dominate. They're taking out the planners, the seats, the, and it's, you know, it's going to look like their block now.
I believe the planning?
It is their block.
No, I mean, on our sidewalks.
Yeah, I mean, it's all, it is their block.
But our sidewalks will be affected, you know, and that's the commons. That's all we've got, so.
The planning commission has the option to hold this over, especially since the applicant doesn't appear to have been able to make an appearance.
Or you can?
And ask for additional information, right. Or, I'm sorry.
I need to shut the meeting. I'm sorry? I'll have to shut the public hearing now.
I have a question, Amanda.
Let me close the public hearing. Anybody else like to discuss anything? Okay, public hearing is now closed. Any, Cindy?
I just want to confirm, so on this picture, it's different than how they had before, where they had, remember Pam was mentioning that if the car was parked there, that awning they had the whole way down? Did they take that out and switch it to this?
No. That, the large awning in that photo that says Hotel Atwater on it, that awning, that canopy going out to the curb has been approved by the city council. The signage on it has not. But the canopy, the shade structure, has been approved by the city council to be installed. So what we're discussing are just these awnings that extend out over the restaurant location.
We're just talking to Phil K.
Yes.
Correct.
And the size of the letters on?
Oh, yes ma'am.
That's what we're talking about.
It's only the size of the letters because?
The sign.
Right.
Is what we're discussing here.
Right, that's the pink, the PKW on the pink picture, that, that's what we're looking at there.
Correct, this is just?
This however, and this however is not anything, this is what they're putting, they're asking for on the ground.
Which is not included in this application either. This is just the awnings.
This is just the awnings.
What I, I really like option number three from staff, which allows us to kind of put this decision off until that awning is put in, where it says, allow the applicant to withdraw the application and wait until the canopy at the Atwater is installed, and determine if something is really needed, and if there's a hardship.
So the applicant's not here, so we can't force them to withdraw it. So your option is to hold it over, is to, this is a public hearing, so you continue the public hearing to the next meeting, so that you give them the option of withdrawing it, or you can deny it.
And then maybe?
And then they have, they have to re-notice it, which would?
And I guess, I'm really leaning towards that, however, since they didn't show up on 50, they really didn't care that much.
Well, there was a few transportation issues the last couple of days.
I think they have some staff on the island. But anyway, but to give them the benefit of the doubt, I would?
So you're saying you would like to see the awning go up as they're proposing it?
Without the sign?
Without the sign.
I would like them to move forward with their project with whatever it is they're going to do, and, and then come back after it's done, because their argument is, you're not going to be able to see it when it's built, well, it's not built. So to give them the benefit of the doubt, let's see what it looks like.
Because they could always mock up the size of a regular sign and what they're proposing, you can see.
Right, and then maybe it makes sense, I mean, I, I'm inclined to deny it for a couple of reasons. Staff's recommendation, it's not on Front Street, it's a little bit different, and it had been there for a long time at the right size with the previous restaurant, but?
And may I ask?
Anyway, I didn't make a motion, so I'm?
And may I ask as well, these, these canopies also needed an encroachment, right? So this has already been given by council, right?
Yes.
So they're going to get that, the awning's going to go, it's just the size of the sign. I, I mean, in my, I think we should, for me, I would rather just see, take staff recommendation.
Well, anybody can make a motion, that's just his.
Right, but they had three recommendations.
Whatever you feel, you can make a motion.
Right. The staff had three different recommendations, and one of them was just to put it off, which I kind of, you know, we're a small enough town, and if they're patient, we could put it off.
And I don't think they're going to be ready to open the restaurant for?
Anything soon.
So it's not, it doesn't?
So I guess the question is, if we put it off, extended the hearing, and then they decided to just conform, then?
It would go off. It would, yeah, it would, we would just take it off the agenda. You, you either act on it tonight, or?
Hold it open.
You continue it, because you can't have them withdraw it until it's done, because they're not here to agree to that. So you can continue it to the next planning commission meeting, continue the public hearing.
Well, then I'll make a motion that we continue the hearing and let the?
Wait, Sandy has to?
But, well, I can make a motion if it doesn't, you can still speak against the motion. That we postpone, or we continue the hearing, and then let them know that it, we, that was the alternative to denying it. But this does give them a little bit of flexibility, but I would recommend denying it. So give them the signal, so I guess that's my motion, give them the signal that it's going to get denied unless they can show some hardship, but give them that opportunity to build out first of all.
Is that double?
So that's an actual motion.
Okay, okay, so?
But does anybody want to second?
I'd second the motion, because I think, let them at least come here and defend themselves, and let them have a speech. I understand it's raining, it's been miserable few days if someone can't get here, and it's going to take, you know, ten minutes of our time at the next meeting.
So anyway, I get that out, but what do you think of that, or what's the problem with that?
Well, I'm just thinking, that's kind of sad if they put it up, and then it doesn't have a sign on it, and then we get it back and we decide, I mean, just saying, what if? So it's like double time, double money, put the sign up, take it down.
But they'll watch. They can perform, and then it's not a problem.
And they could watch this.
Well, yeah, but aren't they still having to put, you were saying, put the awning up and then?
If they want to pursue variance, they can put the awning up and put the sign in conformance as if we had denied it. If we're just going to deny it once they do it, why don't we just go ahead and? You know, I don't know, maybe there is, you know, maybe it looks really beautiful.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we could just?
Why don't we just deny it? I mean, you know, that's?
Well, there's a motion and a second.
Yeah, so I would say?
So we have to vote on that motion.
Perfect.
Let's vote no on it, and then come up with a motion.
Well, don't tell people how to vote on your motion.
Well, this way, I won't be offended if this one fails.
The only thing I can say is, we, we do this all the time with big businesses. This is, this is a huge business, this makes a lot of money for the city of Avalon. I think, out of the goodness of our hearts, even if you're going to turn it down the next time, you give them the chance to come and represent themselves. My God, we had a $15 million building going over for the conservancy. You know, I mean, we've got lights and signs, it's, give them a chance to.
And I don't, I don't see the scaffolding coming down in the front of that building in the next month.
So we're not going to talk about this next month?
No. Well, but I mean, I think, my understanding of Commissioner Patterson's concern is that they would be going to the effort of putting up the awnings without having resolved the sign. I don't see the scaffolding coming off the building within the next month. So they're not going to be in a position to even put up the awnings. I think they wanted to have everything lined up by the time they were ready to open for the summer, but I'm not sure that continuing this to February is going to create a timeline?
Hardship on them.
Hardship for them.
Sandy, did you want to say something?
I just want to know if you've seen, this to me, the rendering looks like it's not an awning, it looks like it's flat. So has anybody seen that? Like, this is kind of in a more oblique view, you see it, but that's not what this looks like. When you see the awning on this angle, where you see the Hotel Atwater site, it clearly looks like an awning. In other words, if this is an older rendering and they didn't, but it, it looks here, like this also is flat, and it almost looks like it's got supports, and then it comes straight.
It's?
Definitely not the same picture.
I think the, I think the straight on view doesn't show how the awning is shaped. Staff would be relying on these other renderings that shows it as an awning that extends out from the building, and not that it's a giant flat panel on the face of the building.
See, that's?
Because they're calling, they're calling it an awning.
I know, but we're assuming something, and nobody's here to answer that question.
Another reason to continue it.
I'm reluctant to vote no on something that looks like it's not.
Right, so?
Can I call for a vote?
That's what I was going to say, let's go ahead and vote on the first motion, and if it fails, then we can proceed with a second one? Okay, so the motion is to continue it until February with, and they've already been given the staff report, where we gave them the options, the staff recommendation was to deny it, so they will be on notice in that respect. So, Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Glass?
Yes.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Chairman Montano?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
No.
And Commissioner Phillips?
No.
So it's continued to the next meeting.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Amanda.
Our last item is a request from the Hamilton Cove Homeowners Association to install a single golf cart parking pad out at Hamilton Cove, adjacent to Building 11 on Gaviota. Because the location is within 100 feet of the coastal bluff, thank you Bart, is abstaining due to a property conflict, ownership conflict. It's within 100 feet of the coastal bluff, it requires, it required a coastal development permit anyway. So we are making the findings that it complies with the Coastal Act, it doesn't affect coastal access. Hamilton Cove is a visitor highly, I'm sorry, I'm stumbling. Hamilton Cove provides visitor amenities and services to our community, and their coastal access is not going to be affected by this. And so we are recommending that you make the appropriate findings to approve the coastal development permit. We are also asking that you make the findings that it is within the 300-foot appealable zone, which it is. So if someone chooses to appeal the coastal development permit, they would initially submit their appeal to the city council. If they weren't happy with the city council's actions, then they can also appeal the coastal development permit to the coastal commission. Bless you. We're also recommending that you find it categorically exempt under State Secw guidelines, Section 15303 of small accessory structures, and that you adopt Resolution 1905, which would be adopting these findings. And let's see, I think that's it. Coastal development permit, findings that it's within the 300-foot appealable zone, and the Secw findings under Section 15303. And Mr. Martinson, audience?
Okay.
Any questions?
Open up the public hearing. Anybody like to discuss this item in the public?
All right.
No? Yes, okay.
Dion Martin from, Martin Curtin from Hamilton Cove. It's a parking space for a handicap person.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask, it is a handicap?
Yeah.
Parking space? Okay, any other?
We're trying to, the lady has issues with getting in and out of her golf cart.
Okay, thank you, Martin. I'm going to close the public hearing. Open it up for anybody who'd like to make a motion.
I have a question, so if it's handicap, is this blue going to designate it as the handicap, or is there any kind of sign? How do we keep other people in it? Is the blue, is the blue paint going to be how they're going to know it's handicap? Or you're going to have a sign too, so other people don't park in there?
Oh, it'll be painted, it'll have handicap on it.
On the side, and no one else, so no one else but that?
No, it doesn't designate a number for her unit, and?
Okay.
And then if she ever sells it, we would return her unit, her existing parking space back to that unit, and would retain that for somebody else who needed handicap. We do have several people who have asked for handicap, you know. for handicap, you know, assistance.
Thank you.
Yeah, but it's not, it's a designated unit for that one specific building, or unit, I should say.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Martin. Any more discussion on this item? Would anyone like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to exempt.
Jenny, you kill me.
I would, I would, I would say, because this is appealable to the city council?
No, I have a question about handicap in general. Annie Marshall, 3302, Wisconsin. If I'm handicapped and I, and I have a handicap sticker on my golf cart, and that thing happens to be vacant at that moment, aren't I allowed to park there?
I don't think it's a public street.
It's not.
This is a private property.
Okay, just wanna make sure, 'cause, okay, good.
Good question, Annie, thank you. It was a good question.
Anyway, in the midst of my mo-.
That's my, that's my answer, without looking into great detail, but I think there's a distinction between.
Private and public.
Private rights away, where we don't grant exclusive encroachments, this is not an encroachment, and a public property that's privately held that they wanna have their own space designated for a unit.
They might need a nice little sign there to clarify that for other people. They might try and just take it. I recommend that.
Jenny, your motion?
Yes, it stands.
Which is to approve.
To accept the variance for the handicap parking.
No, it's, it's, there's not a variance, it's to recommend that the commission accept staff's recommendations and approve this parking space.
All right.
Is that your motion?
Yes, that's the motion.
Anyone like to second?
I'll second that.
Call for vote.
Commissioner Paul?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hewitt?
Yes.
Chairman Montano?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
And Commissioner Glass and Staines.
Okay. Um, is there any commissioner business?
We have one other item.
We have one, one quick item of discussion.
I'm sorry.
The commission had expressed some interest in forming a parking subcommittee, and so I wanted to find out if that was something the commission was still interested in. If it was, then we would have to have volunteers less than.
Three?
Right.
Can be on the.
Could be three or less.
Three or less. And then at the subcommittee, you can open it up and offer to positions to members, if you wanna invite members of the public to also participate.
I would like to, I would like to have a committee, and I would also like to volunteer for it.
Okay.
I agree.
I agree, and I will help them.
I'd volunteer for it.
I volunteer too. So, Cindy, Bart?
I would like to have one. There's other volunteers, that's even better, but I would like to set some parameters for it, if we're gonna have a subcommittee, because, well, I was thinking about this after we talked about it the last time, and, you know, is there, is this just a wide-open thing, or is there gonna be a goal? Like, if it's a parking committee, are we looking for more parking, or are we looking?
To reduce.
For something else?
Right.
Because there's so many issues, you know, how many golf carts do we have? You know what I mean? There's, there's a lot of things, and I think to be successful, we might wanna actually narrow it down. That could be the subcommittee's job.
Yeah.
I mean, that would be the first thing they'll do, but I would.
No, I agree. I'm not, I'm not sure, like, I have a whole, we have sort of had this discussion before. I have a different point of view, which is gonna be really interesting, 'cause you have the other point of view, is that I think that what we're trying to do is abate the golf cart, not find more parking places, find alternatives for people to motive, to perambulate around the center of town, to lessen the congestion in town. I mean, I think that your setting goals is a really good idea. Where, where are we going, and what are the goals of wanting to do that? So, we, maybe we would come at it from completely different points of view, but I think that saying that there are too many, there's too much, too many driving things, and that doesn't, just isn't golf carts. There's also delivery trucks, and, you know, just all kinds of things that, that add to the, and also, quality of life. I think it, it takes away from the quality of life of our little tiny.
I see our mare walking every day.
So, would it be better called a circulation?
Right.
No, no, just keep it the exact same thing.
Yeah, but I do agree that setting goals would be really good.
Since I'm not on the committee, I'll be able to.
So, we have to just limit it to three?
Hear what they come up with in their comments.
Three commissioners, but you could.
It can only be three. Otherwise, if you, if it's, then it.
Right, yeah, I understand the Brown Act.
The Brown Act doesn't.
Can we give, like?
Well, I think the way.
You could have members of the public on there, right?
But then, if you, okay, if it, if it's just three members of the commission, it's not a Brown Act advisory committee, and you can meet, but you cannot discuss it with each other. In other words, once the three of you are selected, you are in silos, and you cannot discuss with anyone else on the commission.
Can we give them representatives prior?
No, but what?
No.
But I think the power.
Once the commission's formed, once it's formed tonight, the Brown Act descends upon it and has those, those requirements. If you have members of the public on this commission, then it's automatically a Brown Act commission that you have to notice in meetings and stuff.
The reason these work is, it allows three people to spend extra time on it, to actually hammer things out, and then they would report to the planning commission every, every month, and then we would give them direction. So, our involvement, we would have involvement, but it would be in the open public forum. It's not that we can't talk about it, we can't talk about it on the side. We do talk about it here, which is the appropriate place, but that's the, I think, the power of it, and then it should build momentum, and then we should be updating city council, so we're not, so we're not having to backtrack, and that it has enough weight that when it finally gets to city council.
They're informed and they're involved.
The city doesn't have a great history with subcommittees, so, you know, often it gets, they don't get adopted, what comes out of subcommittees, but I think if we're careful, and we can use this as a model of how to do it, because it's a pretty pressing issue, and that if it actually works all the way through the process and gets adopted, then we can.
And how, how generally are, is this solicited through, like, we put something on notice on the website? Is it, we put something in the paper to say, looking for people to be part of? Can we ask people, or is that?
You can ask people, but once, if you add people to the advisory committee, it becomes a legislative body subject to the Brown Act, which means you have the post-agendas. Within seventy-two hours of having the meetings, members of the public can, can attend and comment on those meetings.
And the way to do that is just make it a regular, make it simple and predictable, so the notices go out. You know what I mean? Just keep it as simple as possible, that you're meeting on Tuesdays at this time, and Amanda knows it, and, you know, just be formal about it, but, so there are no surprises, and everybody gets it, and then you can have a workshop, and then we can have a workshop here as, as the planning commission as a whole. It can be pretty fun, and you can.
So, so I think.
But there's, but because you're doing it that way, you also wanna really be clear on your goals and your focus.
Does that have to?
Whatever that is.
Does that have to be approved by the council, because it's gonna generate more? Like, if you have to note, if you have to notice all these, and then, does anybody else have to be here for these meetings, which is gonna?
Again, no, okay. So, it's how you form the committee. If you just form it with three of you, and only three of you, you can still have meetings, you can still notice meetings, and the public can, can attend. You don't have to notice meetings. And noticing meetings are very, very simple. I mean, staff can do that, they don't need our office to help them, and it would not be contemplated that you would have, you know.
It doesn't require mailing or anything?
It doesn't require mailing, you know, and so, there's not the cost unless you had a question, you wanted some research done of city staff, and then at that point, there may be some cost. And then, you may, you may wanna maybe have an initial meeting, and then present this to the council, as this is where we are, this is where we think we're going. Is it appropriate for us to use some staff time to help us gather some information as, as we proceed?
I think, I like that idea.
Well, I do too. I mean, I think to, to keep it small, but I also think it's really important that the community has input, but I do believe goal-setting, and what we're trying to do is really important first, before it opens to the public, but I definitely think that public input is really important. We, you know, this is what we're doing this.
Public input, if you have three.
You can still have voluntarily have public informa-, input. You can make meetings, you can voluntarily have the public come to the meetings. They're not part of, they're not voting members of the advisory committee.
I would be much more inclined to do that. I think you're gonna have a hard enough time getting three people to agree on the direction to go.
And I would just add. I would just add one more thing. The city council has created such a committee with respect to the Edison rate case, and so every other month, Councilmember Albers comes and, and makes a presentation to the public, and during that time, the other council members can't participate, members of the public can't participate. So, that's one way to make certain that, that you are noticing, but you can voluntarily, if, if you form it, you can voluntarily, you know, have a workshop of your own and have members of the public come. You don't need to.
And you don't have to notice every meeting.
You don't have to notice every meeting, correct?
Another solution to that could be, in your general goals of what you plan on doing, kinda lay out a general process. Like, in that way, we can just see where the notices have to go, and, you know what I mean? Just kinda lay it out. It doesn't have to be a timeline, just sort of how you would see it. Subcommittee, a couple of workshops with the planning commission as a whole and the public, go back to the subcommittee, public here, a formal public here, and then the city council. You know what I mean? Something just that simple.
The only, the only thing I would advise is not to get out, out in front of your skis, is if the subcommittee's going in a certain direction, where you're gonna be creating policy, you may wanna run it up the flagpole to the city council, 'cause you don't wanna be going down a, a certain lane, and, you know, spend a year and a half doing something, and then hitting, hitting the city council and getting in trouble.
I think that's a great idea, what you wanna do, because if, if, you know, people are dedicated to give it that time, and then I think, like we did with that other issue, we had that joint meeting, which was very good. So, and so you could bring over what the majority, you know, what y'all are talking about, and then, and then, anyway, so I, I liked the idea, and then just, 'cause we got along so well that other one, that was perfect.
So, basically, thank you, Annie. So, basically, she's referring to the Edison?
No, no, the joint meeting when you talked about the transient occupancy issue, I mean.
Oh, okay.
But I'm still kind of not clear on the direct, are we, are we going in the same direction, the three of us that have volunteered for this? Yes, no, maybe?
Well, what if?
You'll find out. Well, but, but we're gonna just have, are we?
It's just the three of you.
To start?
To start, and then you reach out to the community, and then you take the information, and then you, you get all their information, and you discuss.
Do the same thing with the planning commission and the city council. Ask them, you know, what direction do they wanna go? Let's not ring up the wrong thing.
Right. I think the three of you could have a formation meeting, and decide what your goals are, and whether or not you want to include public members of the committee. As Scott said, if you include members of the public on the committee, then you're legally obligated to the noticing process.
I, I liked what Eric said. Maybe even it isn't about goals quite yet, but format. How, how this is gonna happen, and what it is that, you know, we're gonna have two meetings between the three of us, then we're gonna bring that back to the planning commission?
We have four people that volunteered.
I thought.
Well, you have three that volunteered, and, and Eric said that he would, would willfully serve if there was not enough.
So.
Okay.
And you could always, you could always. Just one thing on process. You could always decide tonight to form this advisory committee, and you, you start to go down this, and then at that advisory committee, in terms of discussing the process for it, determines, you know what? We really do need members of the public. We may need some city resources to help us. You can come back to this, you know, you could always add, have this, this commission add a member of the public, then it becomes a Brown Act meeting. You could go to the city council and ask for support if you find you need it. It's flexible at this stage. Once you add members of the public, though, it's.
It's different.
It's stiff.
Just keep it at that, and it's an organizational meeting and all that.
So.
I like.
Figure out how we're gonna lay it out.
Format it.
Format it, and then bring it back to this group first, and then.
Can we have a joint meeting with this, the council? Because it, I mean, it, it makes sense if we're all gonna, this is a joint effort, and so we need to know what the city council, I mean, what, how, what, yeah, what their goals are as well.
That, that's my question. That, that is, that is the tantamount, I mean, you know, that's, I think, why we're doing it, because, I mean, for me, is that I think that that's a concern of the city council, and that they have given us that bit of a charge, and so that is something that I think you could advise us on, or the city council could advise us on, to say, what part of that, that.
What's a priority?
Objective, do you, do you say for us?
I think the, the committee in their initial formation meeting would say, we're in agreement that we wanna tackle A, because we believe that's what the directive we've got, were, got from the council. Then you come back to this body and go, we're wanna tackle A. At some point, if you wanna try to have, once you've come up with.
Yes.
The ideas about A, and you wanna have a joint meeting with the city council to discuss A, and your thoughts and ideas about it, but I think, right now, you're just, you're still in very much a formation.
But wouldn't, would it, would it be really helpful if a city council person was part of our little tiny group, or we can't do that?
If it becomes a Brown Act meeting, once you add a member of another.
Add the four, okay.
Anyone else besides the, the.
I've interviewed.
Subcategory of this group changes the rules.
But then if we have, if that, if it gets, then we can have that kind of official meeting where we.
Of course.
Brown Act.
You can always, you can always, you can always add.
The other thing we could do is ask them to input us through an email. Just send us an email, each of the, right? They could input that way, could they not? Send the city council, email it or not?
Well, you have to be careful about.
Then you. That's where a real meeting in the Brown Act.
Well, I'm sorry to interject. May I speak, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Okay. When we went this last round of commissioners, and I think all of those that you, that I interviewed, it was like, we wanted to see you more as a working body. And these are the kinds of things that I think, because we don't have the time to deal with it, and, and I appreciate the fact that you all are willing to do, to have the time, so it's very, very helpful, because you represent the community as much as we do. You know, so you, and you all drive on the same streets and park in the same parking spots as we do, so you know, we all know the issues, so having, helping to swim through the kelp would be very helpful, I think. So, thanks.
Okay.
Thank you, Annie.
So, when can we do this? When do you want, do you wanna make a time?
Well, we need to, we need to approve this committee.
Okay, we can't even talk about.
And then, once we start, you guys can, you guys can start.
Okay.
Forming your schedule, what you guys are gonna talk about.
It's gonna be, it has to be a motion of this planning commission to establish this subcommittee, and in that motion, you can give them a charge as to have the first meeting within, have a scoping meeting within a month, or something like that.
I'd make such a motion that we have the meeting within a month, and we form this meeting.
And I would second that motion.
Call for vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now you form the committee, now you need a formal motion to appoint members to the committee.
I make a formal motion to appoint three members to the committee?
And who are?
Would be Paula. The same three that, you don't wanna do it, correct? Cindy, myself.
All right. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Paul, abstain.
Okay.
Self-inflicted wound, Bart.
So, so within a month, we need to get together by email here in the next few days and come up with a meeting date?
I, I'm so, I'm so inclined to use my personal email account, is that possible?
Not a good idea.
Nope.
Not a good idea.
Okay, then I have to look at it more often, because.
I have that problem, too.
I will email you guys, and let's try to find a time. You are busier than I.
Now we have to look for a city email. Now, we have to look for a city email.
Now, it forces us to log in.
You can have those forwarded to your personal email.
Yes, you can.
Okay, now that I have my bearing straight, so, um, any Commissioner business?
Public comment?
Publics from the audience?
Businesses from the audience? No? Okay. Commissioner business? I would like to say, I, I would just like to thank the Public Works and the city, um, they have been, I mean, this storm has been pounding us, which, we love the rain, we welcome it, and, I mean, things are falling left and right in the streets, and they're just right there on it, and it's, it's a lot of work to be working in this type of conditions, in, um, large, um, equipment and the storm, and I'm just like, whoa, and I just wanted to thank them and, um, hope they all stay safe, 'cause it's treacherous out there.
I have something too. Living out at Hamilton, we see the rock slides from all this stuff. Um, they're there, you know, when we go home at night, they're there when we go in the morning, if it's been raining, it's been particularly coming down. Um, the area between the yacht club and the casino with the big fences has done a lot of good, but one thing I see as driving it every day is why we're not proactive by removing the debris on the other side of the fence and leaving the fence up until it's filled up to the top of the fence and now coming in the road, because when this happened last time, we had to take shoreboats back and forth to town.
I remember that.
And the kids thought it was fun for about a week, but it, it got really old really quick. Um, but I, and I know it's, it's tough to do it right now, 'cause it's raining, I don't want anyone to get hurt and that, but I think there's about four or five spots that if